Chair and I met with the applicant upon their request. After which, uh, the applicant, uh, submitted a revised submission on Friday. Which was December ninth, and in the interim, plus an O'Neal has been, um. We've been waiting for a half bus off right there, plus an O'Neal to let you know how much supplemental review is still required for this final. Reviews and off, you know, kind of off the record, it's estimated right now, I don't have the official, but she said around sixteen hundred dollars. Um, so I should be getting that in here tomorrow or the next day. And we'll get that, we'll let you know right away, so you can get that one. So that's mission number six we've received and distributed to town apartments, planning board. It has not yet been provided to plus some of you what transpires this evening, but we'll do it immediately. I revised the draft decision and updated it with several of the comments that we received at the last planning board meeting. And that was provided to the applicant team and all the planning board members. Um, if the public is interested, there's a few copies that we made on the back table there, that was done relatively. Nothing's up to tonight, um. Public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Evening. Again, I'm Brian Sharpe, who comes for the applicant FD two fifty twenty by Kelsey.
If you want to go through the new plans or?
Um, Mr. Tatro could speak to them. Uh, I'll say just generally. Uh, we, with his changes, responded to feedback we had received from you all at our meeting on Monday, November, come first. And then as Corina said, she had gone through them last Monday with Mr. Tatro, which resulted in Friday's submission. Uh, but I think as hopefully as a result of our meeting with the chair and the planner, there are no open plan items. And this really should be what you're looking at doing December ninth should be. Uh, very happy, lovely, want to touch on changes?
Sure.
I will say they were covered in his cover letter, which he had submitted on Friday through staff.
To the chair, uh, can take our has been playing design also. Uh, and the last submission, which was made on Friday was just regret. Uh, to lose end of minor consistency among the plans. Uh, the landscaping plan, uh, show all this area here to post, uh, other storage. But though the, uh, lining, the striking, uh, we had them take that off. Uh, and also do not reflect the correct boundaries of the, uh, fence, which is six foot high fence, which is the red line here. Uh, on each side of the entrance here, uh, date. Uh, and then over towards the firebird property line, on the west side and south side. Then on the east side of the existing pavement, and then just three D law. Uh, the property line between lot A and lot B, uh, to block any use of the portion of pavement that's on a lot B. Uh, and that, that also, that resulted in one, uh, parking space effectively being taken out. We had provided thirty seven versus required thirty six before, so now it just defaults down to thirty six versus thirty six required. Uh, there's also, uh, an issue, uh, we had a couple of, um, handicap accessible spaces over here, but we. Uh, strike me and strip between them, it's actually an existing light. And so, and then we were in excess of the necessary number of handicap accessible parking spaces. We just made no huge spaces, regular spaces, so there's no question about whether, uh, the median between them is adequate, so that they qualify as a G C. We still have two van acceptable, uh, and two regular handicap accessible, uh, parking spaces for total four. Uh, versus thirty seven provided, which is well accepts up to fifty, we need two ones we have. You know, so we have that. Uh, there's another, uh, just a small admission, we added the, uh, all the existing trees. Um, along the, uh, private between the two acts of the driveway. And the ball to be on the spaces on the west side of things, they have this one, we, yeah, uh, added that one. So it's just, uh, really just making all. Getting rid of any inconsistencies in my plans, primarily getting the, uh, uh, landscaping and layout plans to reflect. Uh, the correct fencing and correct, uh, paving as far as that the, uh, uh, striping all this area being, uh, eliminated because those. A bolt or a, uh, file, I mean, there's something there, and so, um. The, we believe now we address all the, uh, the minor inconsistencies that have been there on plans amongst the various. Uh, plans intercept and as Mr. Charlo said, we think this would be, uh, planted, uh, to the users, uh, not running through any, uh, time decision.
Thank you. Mister.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. So. The, the fence. Can you remind me what the height is supposed to be based on the distance? Yes.
So, um, during the last. In revision sets, maybe sooner than that, um, originally the applicant had proposed a ten foot high. Screening fence around the perimeter of the story facility, parking area of the lower lot. It was. Found that the ten foot fence in self road by law under section. Under section one seventy four dash two, that the structure is, uh, if the fence is more than sixty feet, it's complete structure. And that would have to meet set out of violence. So we said that, uh, rear yard setback were on ten. Fence higher than sixty, uh, is fifty feet in the rear, like that. And side step back as well. Um, so based on where the lot line was created in the A and R that was. Endorsed back in May, it was here, um. That wouldn't work, it would be, um, not compliant with zone. So, um. The applicant has come back and is showing a six foot fence on the property for, uh, within the property boundary. For this time, and I believe they moved the fence line that were between the upper and lower, uh, sections of the project.
Correct. Uh, Jordan is right, though. We had shown a fence over here off the west side of these spaces, but really was not serving what of a purpose. He simply eliminated, it wasn't going to restrict access to anyone, and there's no sensitive reception or bottom over here to decide. Lot of fence to clean things out, so we simply took off the fence between this point and down.
Yeah, and another point there is that, um, if, you know, there were instances where that fence location may be within twenty foot north door. Um, buffer zone of existing law, and when conservation reviewed his plan, they were viewing it. They were reviewing it under an, and abbreviated notice of recent, uh, diminution. And, um, they primarily, they were solely looking at the detention bases where they were to be continued. The final analysis from conservation, which is more continuing what, but, um, conservation did not refine on, um. Any fence that would be added as an improvement, which would then also follow with minimal disturbance. So, I don't know if conservation find that a problem or not, I've spoken to Melissa about it and. Um, I, I, I don't think it would be a big deal for them, but I'm, this is third new information. Um, but I suggested they check with conservation if they were going to leave the fence there, if it was going to be an issue or not, but instead they offered to take the fence out. Of that exception. So a ten foot fence is originally proposed was, um, not fully compliant when they're looking. Based on the popular, they couldn't, could the ten foot fence, they can't even accept that one. So you have options, so.
So just wanted the fence to be a by right structure in that location.
Yeah.
Slightly uncertain property lines.
So I believe you put it like three feet inside property line, and James is saying, which. Impacted that last parking space. Bottom left corner, um, and they do have, you know, proposed thirty six, they're required of thirty six.
And the height of the fence for a storage area is fine, six foot versus ten?
I don't know if it's fine or not, it's fine as far as zoning. So, six feet is sufficient, it, it meets the code. That it would be, I, you know, and I believe they spoke with the building commission as well, also, you know, it reads the codes. It needs to go, so it's not a structure, it's very located, appears to be appropriate.
And I, and I would just quickly add, we, uh, we had to, uh, make some minor changes, uh, the lighting engineer did. Uh, to wattage of a couple of fixtures because previously, the ten foot high fence off the boundary of the firebird was helping. To stop light from, uh, spilling over on that property, so as part of making this fence sixty five. He actually changed water with a couple of fixtures, so that it wasn't going to get the lower fence that it couldn't supply.
Which also culminated in you having to move that light post to the top right corner, about five feet to the west. So next to the firebird property, there's a light post right there that they were going to keep. Um, where it is, we just changed the picture or the height or something, so now they had to move it inward into the property.
And, and I'm correct, and I would just note also, uh, pursuant to what, uh, Jordan was saying, regardless, well, we very consciously stopped. This piece of fence here, twenty feet away, uh, from the weapons, so they didn't get into that disturbed zones that again, but even that question, that would be.
Um, the child's question, are you going to update the status of the, uh, the, the banner and the office? Like, around lawyer questions that we had. Town Council?
Oh, Charlie.
Yeah, sorry. All right.
Yeah, if you ready, I, whenever you're ready, I can advise you with, um, legal opinion, a recap of legal opinion requests and responses.
Yeah, I mean, I'm at this point, if I'm that, I think it's, it's the, the condition of the improvement of here and there we can, but, um, town council.
So, um. Earlier in December, late November, um, I had posed a question. I had sent him a legal opinion request with five questions regarding, um. Regarding the wholesale storage facility and the newly created lots, um. And roll parking spaces that are located beyond the southern property line as it is now. Um, approaching onto the residential A zone, um, and. Town council indicated that the creation of the new lot line raises problems with the orphan parking on the new lot. It does not appear that such parking would be allowed in the residential A zone, nor, as we discussed, with thirty foot will apply to this lot. Um, so in essence, when the lot, when the, when the property is one big lot, um, town code does allow. Um, based on what zoning line is putting in place and thus, that's separate, the lot does allow for up to thirty feet into the more strict of residential. That was with winning and one, when the A and R was created in the lot line, then Trump, you know, isolated that southern strip parking. Uh, that became, that parking now that was associated with the office building, became an illegal use in the residential A zone. So, that was the first question. Um, and then we asked about, uh, the special permit runs within use of the property. And the variance runs of the land, um, and it depends on five conditions of approval in the special permit. Appear to remain applicable and normally be all the buying special permit, meaning an amendment to the special. So there was nineteen ninety special permit for the light man, light manufacturing use form system. Hopefully that was permanent of the time, and there were five conditions in that special permit, uh, from the Z B A. Re- which, re- which once we restricted use on the lot, in other words, no access to. Park the road, no building on the residential A part, I think they say lot, but, um, and then there was, um. One other restriction, just can't remember what it is, and then the two last conditions were, um, solely based on the manufacturing, so they weren't. So in the big picture, town council will find that those conditions still fall and that it would be. That, yeah, okay. I think we need to go back to the view to then, that special permit do not require those conditions for the way of special. So, and the distinguishment is that, um, there are site specific conditions and there are use specific conditions. And the three that were, I was talking about, the access and the, whether the build, you can build on the residential lot. Those are site specific, and the other two that related to the manufacturing use, that we can't add in our manufacturing, those were use specific, that's what it's saying. Um, let me see here, um, it was determined that it was that typo on the nineteen ninety C B A decision. Where it had, um, followed a variant sets that had been kind of table, but the vote was a special permanent. And, um, upon looking at the actual original application, we can find that it was a special permit, very interesting. Let's see here. Um, the fifth question, the fourth question was the same as the second question about the special permit. You know, run with the land and have the conditions for, the fifth question was regarding, um, endorsement of the A and R plan in May of twenty twenty two. And did the planning board negate any conditions of the nineteen ninety special permit that was in play? Um, and he said, no, the A and R was approved under the subdivision control line, not all the zone. So that's, that was that legal opinion, so then I asked for some clarification, um. Here, um, as a quick follow up, I asked him, special from that run with the use of the property and every variance from the land. It still wasn't clear to me at that time, um, and the answer is it, um. It depends, he just reiterated the five conditions of approval in that nineteen ninety special permit to remain applicable and probably be all for buying stuff. So originally, there wasn't, there wasn't, you know, a thing back on. The applicant seemed that they remained felt that the special, the new special permit that they issued in August of twenty twenty two. All roads and nineteen ninety special permit, um, that doesn't seem to be what town council. And when I spoke with the chair of the V B A, um, Chair Williams, um, and asked him specifically during intent during the meeting. You know, what was discussed and I read the meeting minutes, um, he also outlined that, um. The intent was not to change those specific site restrictions on, it was based on the use that we forward it. Um, and that was that legal opinion, and then I had sent another legal opinion request regarding the drainage easement. Um, is a drainage easement for offsite drainage an acceptable approach, and I believe, um, the understanding was, yeah, yeah. Can an easement be created by an A and R law and by an A and R plan, because the easement was shown as proposed even on the A and R. Which I don't think was, um, super clear, I don't think we focused on, uh, it's more the frontage on the way, um, and. An A and R, I, I mean, an easement is not lines on a plan, an easement requires the language that describes the pool. The whole, and you know, the dominant and surveying and parties in that, um, there was also discussion that you can't. Give, you can't give an easement to yourself. There, there is some way you can do it with a real, some kind of real estate even, but it was a tricky kind of thing, and we didn't go into that great detail on that, but. So he said, and my last question was, is it a viable approach for the planning board to require a condition to sign with. The drainage easement language provided for the detention basin utilized by the self storage lot. That is located on property to ensure that the easement language is appropriate and recorded at the registry, yes, absolutely, and that. Um, a condition should be added, saying that the drainage language, um, since written. Could be provided for town council, new and separate by the planning board. Try it to such a good office, and, and then with the condition that you record that. And you'll, you'll report the drainage when you convey the property. Right, so when you convey the property, the deed should reflect that there's an easement, and I just want to point out, it's not just the detention basin, I think they. Right, I think about halfway up in the middle of the lot, in the middle of the parking, right under where the freedom and six. Somewhere near to.
There, there are, there are, there are back two.
Yeah.
One here in South East corner.
Yeah.
One in the middle of this line of pavement.
Yeah.
And is addition to the grain and hole right on the property boundary.
Yeah, yeah, and that little loop that. So just note that, when we do the debt, it's that, somehow you got to make sure that. Um, so that was it, and then the last thing we then asked him was your ability to attend this evening, um, and they were not available. This evening. But they could be available at the next. Um, January night.
So I have a lot of questions, I just read the parking conditions in this one, which are, that's why that language.
The little things, the, the landscape plan, the note says the hickory trees remain, yet the key still says it's to be removed.
Is it supposed to stay or go?
Stay.
Okay. Okay, in the top left corner.
Yeah.
There's a hickory tree there, that's supposed to stay.
Yes.
But the note that, so. That green is concussion and most trees just. My. Um, note eighteen says all tree and vegetation removal shall be coordinated with the project, what tree will be? Um, thought trees were remaining.
Yeah, at this, at this point, there is no.
Do we can get rid of that note?
Yeah.
Now the fence starts, uh, what was that parking space, why doesn't continue across and you can't access that lower lot?
Well, you, you, they, on this point, it would be the red line of the fence. I mean, there's a burn corner right here, you can't ride between this fence and get to. Do that, this is to be striped off. Doesn't physically stop anybody from parking right. And but the fence would stop anybody from getting to the end of this strip.
That's true, so how, so how tells the burn, I don't think the driver.
Typical six inch, uh, A cross section style one.
Six inch?
Yeah.
So that would be easy to check.
As opposed to, you know. I mean, if you want us to extend the fence, we can do that, it's not a big deal. But I mean.
Well, I think access to that, whereas they, the portion of the, the, whereas a apartment should be cut off, not.
I mean, unless somebody drives over whatever, whatever vegetation there is there, and we can look at her, you're not going to be able to get to it. We can extend the fence.
When is this war going to act on this site plan?
When I finish answering the asking my question. Um, the trees, I thank you for noting all the trees, there are some on the western side. Um, that aren't, that are there, but they're on, they aren't shown in the vote list.
There are some, I don't know if those are some of the very large ones, or some on illegal leasing property, immediately adjacent to the property line. If those are, uh, some of the ones that you received on. Now, there's some very large ones, like just over the line, and to me, it's, I, I really, I really debated asking, should we be, should we ask? For credit for those as, as the buffering, no, but they're on the, uh, furnished properties, and we didn't go with the last one.
So all, so all the trees that are shown are, um.
Yeah, all these.
The intention is that they are, they are to remain.
Correct.
But that's not noted on.
Well, where we've not, I mean, again, with the exception of the accidents or, uh, type of, you know, the renting, we're not proposing to cut any trees. I'm not sure, we, we have to say every tree is to remain, we're not.
You'd be surprised. Well, that's a simple thing, so.
Yeah, because, because they're, they're there to satisfy the, um. The buffer on Route nine. And I think it should be clear that they're to remain.
Okay, uh, we'll add a note specifically saying that, oh, your, I know three times proposed.
Those are the easiest, so difficult, according to, um, the site plan approval. In order to approve a site plan in the planning board, let's ensure that, um, visual intrusion is minimized. By minimizing the visibility of parking, storage and other outdoor. Uh, service areas viewed from public way for premises that's essentially leased or sold. So, my question is, if that's going to be outdoor storage and hogs are eight feet tall. And cones on trailers are at least two feet tall, how is a six foot fence going to? Minimize the visibility of those.
Because of the topography there, the land slopes off toward Route nine, not up from the residential zone block. And so a six foot tall fence will be adequate to block any visibility of things that. Anything that the applicant intends to place upon parking or storage.
So what you're saying is, uh, if you're standing in that strip of parking. That's, um, say you're standing near that fence, six foot fence along the southern property line, right, that you're proposing. You're saying from that point, so the property goes, the property goes down?
No, looking toward the self storage side.
So I'm standing on the lower lot, looking towards the storage, and the property goes down?
Generally, yes.
So you're.
I suppose if you were Taco Fall, the former Celtics player.
Yeah.
Who I think is seven, eight, that then you would see over the fence. But most people aren't seven, eight.
I just want to, I just want to be clear, so you're standing on the. I just wanna, I just wanna be clear. So you're standing on the south of that fence or south, you're standing on the southern lot. Stay near the detention bases somewhere, right? And you're looking north? Right? To the front of the gun. Uh you're saying. The property actually. Goes down towards Route nine?
Generally, yes.
You would be, you would be standing, for instance, if you're standing in detention base on elevation three fourteen.
Yeah.
And the property line, for instance, right here is three twenty. At the ground, so the fence sits up at three twenty-six and then you're standing at three fourteen.
Oh, so you're lower at the potential there. You're standing lower and the property goes up.
But my point, though, is then beyond the proposed six-foot fence, property begins to go back down again.
Oh, kind of like a, like a high point and then. So it's almost like an exaggerated burn.
Yes.
I just want to try and get a picture of that to the planning board I was standing.
If you're on the other side of the detention base, you're equal with the fence.
Or maybe even lower. If James has the contours.
Actually, if you were on this property, for instance, right here, you're standing at elevation then called three twelve. So you're again quite a bit lower than this. Then three twenty, the ground right here, fence at three twenty-six. And. Yeah, that's three twelve right there, standing beside a garage. So again, you're fourteen feet lower uh than the top of that fence. I can't say that nothing can be visible from under it, but it is, the property is helping uh create some. Um diminution, diminution of visibility.
Any other questions on board?
Well.
In the public? Any questions? Um. Any questions?
Well, I I guess I have one question. I don't remember seeing it. The fence itself, is it gonna be woven with like green?
Yeah, it's gonna be, the fence is gonna be chain-linked with the slats worn through to create effectively an opening. On the surface, key from our side.
Is that in the condition?
Uh I know that it's on the plan in the top right corner, there's a chain link fence as a buffer screen, but we can add.
No.
Definitely.
It's on the.
Yeah, it said.
But which, but but you're right, though, it doesn't, did not specify that it be with the slap to be okay for that. I'm gonna have an discussion all along, having a physical barrier. So. With the decision, we'll explicitly call that off every. Perfect.
But Andy, it wasn't specific on the plan. It just said six-foot buffering fence, screen or.
Well, we uh is it easier to put it in the conditions or on the plan?
It should probably be on the plan. You can tell me that note on. Inside the cell percent that um. You're proposing more specific.
So the only thing I change is L three, your piece does propose ten foot high. So you need to change that. It's not going to matter.
So did you, did you, did you think that um being specific on the type of fence should also be in the? In the decision or is the plan?
Uh I'm fine with a plan if it's on plan. Boy, if you found it.
It's gonna be changed.
There're gonna be other changes on the plan, and that's easy. Uh I don't wanna talk shit.
Too late.
But that depends you're going with, be sure about that thing.
Yes.
That type of thing.
For the for the storage use, it's the appropriate thing. You can get prettier solid fences, but. You know, area that the things are just stored, people know. And things around potentially. So more heavy, rather than pretty.
Um Lena, on the. The decision on the procedural history. It still has restriking of the lower parking lot, but they will make the.
So you're not restriking the lower.
No.
You're gonna leave the existing strapping? Is there existing strapping?
There is existing strapping right now. We want to be over there, we're out there, and you see all the, we have been shown on the existing division point.
Right.
Uh divisions of those spaces.
So you don't plan on refreshing those? You're just gonna let that be the way?
Yes.
Yeah. So you're not restriking? I have to just make sure that.
And also on five, number three, you know.
Well, I'll be updating that materials, but still that that's just kind of more of like stuff I can put in anything. I wanted to focus on the um conditions at first. And Brian, you were aware, everything I highlighted had a potential change in the discernment. Of in the condition and or the findings, um you know, I added the note about the A and R plan with yours. I mean, so this history, I think. The town council opinion of the legal use on residential A, so it's clear in the future. There are two standard. Um findings in the decision number twelve and thirteen. And in it, you know. When with prior town council, we added these statements because um town council. Recommended it, but it's the applicant and the project representatives demonstrated on the plans and reported to correspondent very closely that the post development is a we're voting by law. Uh and then number thirteen is very similar. I just wanted to make sure. What still finds? So with the final. Minor changes to the plans as discussed tonight. We need to get. When you submit for free copies of the final plans for planning board endorsement. You have to have those changes in there and. Uh it will probably reflect a new date. Division date, right? So I'll update the date accordingly. Um under the decision of the vote of the board. Based on the plan that you provide.
Back to my question about when the board's gonna act. The applicant has not directed the engineer to make any plan changes.
No, but if he does. This is.
He he's nicely offering to, but we haven't asked him to do that yet.
Okay. But just so you know. So those those little updates and inconsistencies are not gonna be changed on.
I didn't say that, but. I uh highly suspect based on the lack of progress here, that when he makes those changes tomorrow. There will be more T-crossing and I-dodding that he's asked to do. Which further delays Fuss and O'Neil will do something and further delays action by this board. I mean, the change relating to tree removal must be uh done in coordination with the landscape. That does not mean, that's not an inconsistency. That does not mean tree removal will occur. That's a protection for the board, just if this showed any true. That it would be done under supervision.
That has not been.
That it's a, it doesn't mean tree clearing. It's not intended to mean tree clearing will occur. Again, it's there for protection for the board, I think. So we're moving in, if anything, is not to the board advantage and probably to the board's touch. Cause it takes away a chance at coordination if there was tree removal occurring and as the plan shows. And as Mr. Tatro reiterated, no tree removal was proposed. So we can go meeting, we can go meeting after meeting.
To change, so in order for the planning board to endorse uh once they vote. Hopefully. Um so maybe later, um there's other things that have to change, so. A small change like that is not a. Shouldn't be a big deal to say you're not gonna remove the trees, because you have to change some other things over. There's some um inconsistencies on the votes that we just went through. So if you're gonna change one small thing, you need to fix the plan so it's out.
If Mr. Tatro makes these changes, will the four members of the board sitting tonight vote to approve the second?
Yeah.
No, I just. I wonder if the board would. Be willing to say that. Given where we are and the number of changes that were made, each concern. Has been responded to and the applicant's paid for Mr. Tatro to make more changes. We come back and we're about to pay Fuss and O'Neil again. So. How, I wanna be able to advise my client to say yes to coming back on January ninth. I really do. So can I would not hear from you all? Can the the audience hear from you? That when he makes a change as it has been discussed tonight? That I can tell Mr. Ferris. That there's gonna be action nights. He can walk out of here the night or the morning of the tenth. And know that you're handing a signed decision to the town.
So you're asking us if we're gonna improve a plan? We haven't seen you.
It is that exactly what you're looking at? And hopefully you've had a few staff since Friday.
You you're you're on the planning board yourself in your own town, right?
Yes.
I mean, so you're, that's. I mean, granted, in my own opinion, there's not anything else that doesn't, you know, change or isn't. There's no new inconsistency or anything? I got no other question?
All the time, it's the Lenzel Plan Board, which I chair. Applicants say to us, we're gonna make these changes. Do we know when we come back next month? That you'll act? And we give a straw poll yes, because we know. Um what the applicants and their team are having put into these changes and further delay. We we talked about it with the chair and the planner last week. Mr. Ferris is having tax consequences. Because this will now not be approved in calendar year twenty twenty-two. We talked about the lending costs, the cost of interest on the loan that he's not able to use because work hasn't proceeded. I I wanted to say, let's take a a little step back. No one is, can think that. The the site plan can be improved as readily as special permit was by the ZB in August in one meeting. That was wonderful, but that was, that was an exceptional. But really, if we take a step back. This is an existing fifty-five thousand square foot building. That's the thrust of this use. And the thrust of the site plan is interior work where the outside bones are changing. The the storage in the parking lot, which I know you have to condition and oversee to affect the town. Is ancillary. So it really is, when you take a step back to us, I'm advocating for my client, but it is really. More than anything else, an existing building. Mr. Ferris just wants to reconfigure on the set yourself.
Which needs to be in compliance.
Yes, and I think we're there. That's why, like, adjusting the fence night. And and all that. I think we're there. I haven't heard about any zoning not compliance in terms of discussion there.
I have no other um. Concerns other than lots of inconsistencies that I would like to see. None of these.
Thank you.
I mean, I I understand your point, but at the same time, from what we've experienced of the board. Not from you or this applicant or other other thing. If we're not crystal clear, no, everyone's not crystal clear on what we're proving. Then random things happen. And even when we are crystal clear, random things happen. We still have. Uh applicants that are coming back or we have to go to. Through the town enforcement offices, because they've changed things that are coming to us and things like that, so. Um and the only thing we have to go back to is the plan itself and point to it and say, here on the improved plan, this is what it said. And now you're out of compliance and we have to bring it back. So we've got, you know, one shot at this to get it right. And that's what we're trying to do.
So um do you want to finish quickly going through the last few questions of the condition?
I want to say, by the way, we're completely on board as we talked about in that that side meeting we had last week. About the decision containing that condition about when the other lots off convey, there will be an easement right at that time that you all accept in town council.
That condition of by. And which.
More important.
Shall be provided for the drainage easement. And then um just so it's clear. Easement language including but not limited to the drainage easement, if any other easements proposed after. To make care of at this point of that. Um shall be subject to town council.
Excess.
And again, I'm just going through the highlighted one, because we are in trouble. Lena, can I bring up something that I'm wanting to bring? Sure. Um I don't know if it goes there or not, but because we have a, we talked about a um. Noise by law, and I don't know if the noise by law, so Board of Health has um now a Board of Health noise pollution policy. And I don't know how that gets referenced in these documents, but I wonder if it gets referenced up in three, because it's a policy for industrial noise. And a bylaw. Also, by law, I think comes under general laws. But the Board of Health noise pollution policy isn't exactly referenced in here. I wonder if you can add that reference somewhere. So I think that we talked about in that earlier meeting, and I think there was discussion to add the term in it, and all the um. All the policies and the rules and regulations are applicable there too. Oh, okay, because I'm seeing all the rules and. Yeah, it's not in there right now, but I remember that we talked about adding the word off the scene there, of which would cover. Other policies as well, so. And ADN policies or noise by law policies or anything else. They're still compelled to follow the sound code open and those code reference policy and regulation. So I could, just for clarification, so there's no confusion, because I know it happens. Could add the word policies. Um in all of the, all the rules and regulations and policies are applicable there too. Yep. That. Are you on with that?
Yes.
Generic, generic, generic of all of that. Okay, so number seven, I had highlighted. Just because I changed the wording a little bit, exterior building on the light, which shall be controlled by an internal time clock, which can be programmed by the owner. Lighting for outdoor storage areas shall have motion sensors. After eight P M, exterior lights will be controlled by motion sensor. Uh and then the hours of operation, running down. Means the lights off at ten. So I just wanted to make sure that. Condition number ten was added. For a little bit, the existing trees on the western forty of the site and along with nine char remain, just to reinforce, because we run into a lot of issues with trees. And we are a city USA community master. Uh the hours of operation, I spelled it out and clarified that the building is twenty-four hours a day, seventy-three sixty-five days a year, separate fire darts recommended by current customers. And storage self, self-storage use continues video monitoring by the property board's agent property manager. Exterior storage lot, six A M to ten P M, maybe a fire darts at the gate to the lot and to. So it's clear to. Everybody. At eight o'clock, eight P M, motion sensors are activated to turn the lights on and off, and at ten P M, the lights are off. Right? Uh and then the.
Yeah, or ten, there wouldn't be any access other than by first responders.
Right. Um the planning board shall be notified when the facility begins operating. As just said, notification of planning board shall have one year to review noise levels. During this review period, the planning board reserves the right to require adjustment to the hours of operation of the exterior storage area to determine impact adjacent properties except. So at the last meeting, that's another to lighting by law, to the lighting aspects, whether it's anyone that's getting with you.
Uh I um I just as an update, I hadn't read, I just received, I think, the last meeting, the um Board of Health um noise pollution health. Um and the statement that they say, I thought might, it might be the blur, or you can use one. Created in the, in the um Board of Health policy, it says, this is their statement. The town of South Rose noise by law encompasses unreasonable disturbance beyond the property line. So it it is almost the same concept as the lighting by law that is based on on the property. And it's just a simple statement. It's not really um specific to this. And it's just a simple statement, it's not really, um, specific to this property, but I think if we're gonna, um. You know, put in a, a statement about, um, lighting by law and not transit. Or some property or whatever going on in property, I'd be interested to have a statement that sort of does almost, you know, the one sort of thing.
So, um. Can you just say that again one more time?
So, so this is just there, I'll tell you, the town of South Rose noise by law. In encompasses unreasonable disturbance beyond the property line for keeping the peace. Is what it actually states.
Yeah, so my opinion on that is that, um. If it does become an issue, that the planning board will resource the Board of Health's policies at that time. This leaves it a little bit more open, so that it's not restricted to this, uh, site name or whatever. No, I mean, it just leaves it a little bit more in the planning boards round to source. The issue.
Okay, what does that mean? Because the policy doesn't list the planning board as having any role in noise. Um, there's actually a policy and a Board of Health guideline, and the guideline is meant for. Residents and, you know, commercial, uh, non-residents to, you know, what to do if there's. Uh, noise, and it's residential and non-residential for, for standing. And, and so it did link it where Board of Health has a role and where police have a role, but nowhere on their. Guidelines does it say that the planning board has a role, and I think maybe the building inspector too. So we don't, right, except for we've reserved the right on this particular project for one year, just to make sure. That whatever's going on in the store, of our stores. Have a detrimental thing about. Yeah, so that actually goes farther than what, um, yeah, and I thought that I don't remember, that is exactly what we were talking about, but I'd be interested to see. The, um, board would begin putting in, um, a statement about, um, noise, um, not going over the property line. In a similar way that we put in, light can't go over the property. And, and maybe that's above and beyond what's required here, but I'm looking for something standard, it's not necessarily, you know, for this particular, you know. This particular, um. Uh, yeah, but, but all the plans beginning, because the bylaw just went into effect recently.
So in the outdoor elimination, we, we've talked about this more detail in other speak, um, the command of, of the bylaw. But in the outdoor elimination by law, um, it specifically says we shall be no light. Right, so we don't reevaluate that in the evaluation, we know that we can go back to that if there is any problem. Or if there's a challenge to be resolved, so these conditions are then, they're kind of like, um. Some of these are very specific to the project, and this allows me to get access back, that if there is a noise concern later. Planning board, then does the researcher calls the applicant in and say, you can yell complaint. I'm not sure, and it's just my opinion, I'm, I'm just, and I, you have a very valid point, I'm just not sure that level of. Detail in a condition, sometimes it creates problems after, because it can also be construed in a way, and it opens it up. Whereas if we leave it, the planning board has the right, you know, revisit this. And then whatever the policy, the policy may change on the next time.
So what happens after a year, though, so that's my only concern, is that the Board of Health policy. Um, doesn't require town meeting, it follows mass D P, noise air quality, um, and then they. Put some guidelines around that, um, but what happens, you know, after a year, it's a couple of years down the road. And somebody comes and says, you know, we're having a problem, is the planning board gonna save? It's, it's a year out. That would be the right order, but can we reference the Board of Health policy directly?
That would be, I mean.
Yeah.
We would, we don't wanna insert ourselves in. And I agree for one year, completing the review process, but then. If someone, the Board of Health wants, then throw something to do with zoning or something. That's our side, so. It should be, um. I assume, Karina, if you gotta call, you'd recommend some of the Board of Health.
Right, all depend on what the issue is, so when that happens, then I contact the board, through the chair, and. Or you guys can contact me, and then I can take the proper channel, I go, I can finish the call for reinforcement. Well, I will, and we discuss it and see if she's had other issues at the time, and then we take the next step back on. It's just hard to, like, make it too specific in it. When it goes back to the policy or the code or something, hold it. You know, zoning code is one thing. But it's a valid, I understand that.
I'm, I'm glad to talk about it, and I think just by adding policy in the language of.
Yeah, you had mentioned that previously, I don't know why, but then about will add it now, that. Okay. Um, number twelve, a lower parking area entrance gate will shall offer the car access system used. Only by first responders, the property owner, its property manager, and customers are storing items at the lower parking area. Customers are subject to the hours of operation outlined in these conditions of approval, and that, I believe, is to mean all customers. Not just customers of the lower lot or customers of the building, right? Uh, next thing, we've, um, added, number fourteen, there shall be no access to Parkerville, Parkerville Road from the site. Number fifteen. Sure, um, is that final language, so something that, that's all we need. Because of the other protection from the other document. It's a condition specifically for this project, and that's why. Right, can, can it be modified to say that there should be no access, you know, from, to, or through any other site on Parkerville? No, because we're just.
About, about having a thing that this one will restrict. That on the lot. Put the fence here to segregate this activity such that there's no other question, that what's being approved is all that's on the slot.
And, and when, and if they come back for site plan approval on the southern lawn, for whatever purpose. Then you can just. Um, number fifteen would just save if anybody had any additional conditions, but they wouldn't remember, and that was it. Would you, just be aware that, um, planning board member gets his time, if absent at the meeting. So, this would be, that would be, and one's part of the, about, um. The planning board that's present, the one that already voted.
Um, to that point, I'm at the ninth.
Yeah, yeah, that would only be two people without I.
Voting, if that's when the date is.
We won't. So, on the ninth.
But just to reiterate, the, the fence to the, to the end there, the note. Um, referring to the fence ten sixteen, not ten. Um, we removed note eighteen. Note that the tree shown on the plan that shall remain, and the note on the landscape plan saying the history tree from the key. Those are the.
And the fence is going to go to the.
I'll just gonna extend it to the.
To the burn, okay.
I'm trying to find clarity right next to that, so I guess, um. I'm going to, and so the next steps, they'll update the plan, we submit. Those plans have to be sent to Fosnum O'Neill for final, okay?
Um, well, that's a good question, because, um, Fosnum O'Neill. Like I said, we're waiting for the T A, but for the one. Task authorization for them tomorrow. I, I don't, I'm not sure if they even started the review, because often on these projects, they continue knowing that applicants will follow. It's not, but sometimes they don't, um. It's up to the board, if they're comfortable, um. With Fosnum O'Neill, we're being, well, let's put it this way, I could send. Depending on when you get me this revision, I could send this submission number six to them. Uh, outlining the items that have to be changed, and they could consider that. Or you can get me, um, a set of plans very quickly with those revisions, and we can get it right to them. Review, so it's probably best if you get me a set of plans, A S A P with your changes, and, um. You know, if you get me the PDF and the hard copy matches, I can get them the PDF.
And what, what's the expected turnaround in Fosnum O'Neill when we're going into the hall?
Well.
I think that's the way he's going.
Yeah.
To see if she could be available for the night.
I don't, I have to talk to him, I know that the, uh, the mystery now, and so, I'm trying to, because we're not going. I can talk to them tomorrow, and then I have to.
Because I knew the conversation was the date of the ninth, but that's probably not possible, trying to figure out if people may get. Back here.
No, and if there aren't major issues, I, I, I don't think that any of these issues impact, like. You know what I mean, or the photography or site distances or anything at this point, it's just a matter of semantics. You know, that you're extending, um, the fence there, and, you know, you should just make sure that. The conservation agent doesn't have an issue with approaching, I, I don't think she has a problem if she's staying on the same area.
The thing, we asked for, my.
Impact.
What Fosnum O'Neill, the Fosnum O'Neill. They came back to you tomorrow, so they, uh.
Yeah.
We just, weeks.
Yeah.
They could get it in.
Yeah. I would be, I think, you know, from my perspective, you submit the plan, I make sure the changes are made the way you prescribe. Um, they would give it a quick one, so I can think, you know, nothing else has changed, these are the five points. And we just are trying on them. And if not, um.
Yeah, so, um, Chairwoman was out, so that's the key, is it feasible that we could meet on the nineteenth? And do this before the year ends?
That's Monday.
Right.
Please.
And morning could be, you know, four.
Right, and then you have four versus the nine. And these guys, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's Fosnum O'Neill, and I can talk to them, they don't have any big issue concerns, because at this point, they didn't. Had the waivers were taken, were to be taken off, and they were fine with everything, um. You know, confirming that there's no light shed because of the six-foot fence on that side. I think it's doable, I just don't wanna put my neck out there and then it doesn't happen, because I don't wanna make any problems. I think that. You know, these changes aren't, like I said, they're not a drainage calculation changes, I don't believe, but then.
But it's the first day of March.
So it doesn't have to be a Monday. Tuesday.
Doesn't date.
Yeah.
Your Friday?
Later this week.
And Monday? Is that possible? It would just, I think you can. It would just be this, it would just be this, probably getting, it would just be this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
To motion to approve.
And then I could work with Fosnum O'Neill to make sure there's more.
Thank you. Of course.
So, um, we could post a meeting, um, Friday morning. And check meetings that should be somewhere, Friday morning is not on the sixteen.
It's Friday.
It's Friday. Well, is everyone soon?
For everybody.
Or, um, to me, it's easier. If you could be here, I think it's much easier in case, you know, can see everything. Oh, nine to noon?
What we just do is zoom.
A Zoom meeting? I think that's still acceptable, yeah, into March, for reversed.
After ten o'clock, between eleven and noon.
Will be ten?
So, ten A M.
Thank you.
So we don't have a one?
No, the vault, this is for the personnel board, nine, I mean.
But we could need, uh, if there's another available, uh, for the safety. Or the senior center.
So it's easy to just.
Because then, hopefully, can, because if we go to the public safety, we won't be able to broadcast.
Well, they have to say a lot of their. So Zoom is acceptable, and like I said, you know what? But, changes, yeah, not many changes. And the decision has been gone, we'll just have to just finish the updates, and I'm ready if you get the plan. And I'll talk about it, you know, you know. And calling who posted for ten A M, Zoom meeting.
Again, the process of this is that Fosnum O'Neill's saying is what they've approved earlier.
Correct, yeah, they have an opportunity. So the last review, they had no further comments, but then these changes came, so. I don't think, nothing's changing backwards.
Thank you.
And a motion.
Oh, but if something happens.
Yeah, we should have an extension, um, in case there is a weather or something to that effect. Um, also, I think you were going to.
Oh, yeah, I received the, um. An email from our public accessibility committee, and just asked that you may aware that we've been.
No question, we got a team of architects on the, the whole site, especially the.
That was.
Well, this is mine, that one.
You have to just upgrade, the public hearing and extend each other.
Well. So, Brian, is, okay, we extended what this says to the nine. Well, well, I'll say the next meeting is gonna be January, uh, sorry, December sixteen. But in terms of extending action, just in case. We're gonna say, uh, to reach a decision by the January thirteen, which is the purpose. In case something happens, not, totally not intending for that to happen, but if the Zoom room doesn't work or anything like that. Wanna be able to have that buffer, is the point, and I chaired a CPC meeting where. We actually couldn't get into a Zoom meeting, and, you know, just, we can't for that to happen. So, uh.
Extend to the thirteen.
Yeah, so, make a motion that we, uh, accept the. On its request. To extend the approval period for the uh. Two fifty Turnpike Road LLC to January thirteen. Two thousand twenty.
Second.
Second motion, the second, any discussion? More in favor, which one, yes?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That said, making Washington, we continue the public hearing for. Two fifty Turnpike Road Major Site Plan Approval to December sixteenth. At uh ten AM by Zoom. Two thousand twenty two.
Great. Second.
Motion, second, and the session. All favor of the trial, yes?
Yes, yes.
Pull the hand, yeah, you're in the.
Thank you. I have a signed extension request that conforms with those dates you just. I may.
You wrote it in there?
I did. I just had to change. January nine to January to December sixteen.
Ten AM.
Correct. Thank you very much. We'll see you by Zoom Friday.
Very good.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for two hundred. Turnpike Road. Yes. Put it up on the board and say. So the applicants represented as requested um. Uh, to continue the public hearings, remain the site plan a few more and especially permit for lower impact development for two hundred turn for growth. To uh the January ninth. Two thousand twenty three planning board. Meeting at seven ten PM.
So moved.
They're all set with an extension because they're put into that meeting, that meeting, they're not ready. They'll have to request an extension.
Second.
You both. Second. Need discussion, all favor, which one, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
You're in, yes. Okay. Oh, extensions. For the next item.
What was that both? Do we do both a special permit and a major site plan?
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Next item is a discussion on the Boston Road Minor Site Plan Approval.
Sure, come on down. I'm so scared after that.
Okay. Would you give a quick update?
Sure.
Okay. So um. Whether tonight is um. Ten nine? With an S, right?
Martin.
Martin, no. I'm right after that. So um then. Thank you. Right word. Uh, it's committed already to leaving three hundred fifteen square feet of. What was formerly detailed thing. In the one Boston Road property, which is also known as three East Ministry, just the. So. Um, he's provided a plan that's stamped by him inside himself and. He finishes on the air. And it shows. Kind of hard to see there. To get it on the line. But the existing building has a small area of three hundred fifty square feet in here. Like I said, which previously was. Go to the building. Then first approach. Um, in the. Describe what he wanted to do, but it's a lot of these videos and it's not a gym where people coming to go and get a bill is by appointment. And then what um. It is training. Would you also fit in because this is the downtown district now as a first. Personal services. So we sat and talked about this and we did some calculations. Their engineer did as well and the prior retail space required through case of. Uh, Jen's use. Requires only two. Or. I can't remember which, it wasn't the assembly, it was. Anyway, per use, personal services only require two speed. So. This triggers minor site energy, it's under two thousand square feet of change of use. From retail person service. And since downtown district, it does not require a special permit with downtown. They would put the finer note of preparing. So. That's kind of the overall. Just to go. So they have, it appears they have the parking. So. That's my update, Jen wants to go.
Hi, I'm Jen.
Hi, Jen.
Um. I am excited to open studio downtown, I'm seeking approval, it's uh by appointment only maximum of three people would be in there and it's a few hours a day. Um, there's parking and it's. Good for everybody's health. And you know, I just, I think it's, it's not disruptive and I'd love to. Bring, you know, Pilates to downtown, I think it would be nice balance to some of the other stuff that's there. Uh. And that's it. I don't know what kind of questions. You have. I'm happy to answer anything you might want to move out.
Uh, thanks for coming in, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
Uh, it's great to see you. Yeah. Um, not just running down the street.
Oh, no, yeah.
Um, so Jake, can you just tell me how long have we been doing Pilates?
I have been doing Pilates since two thousand three, I think. So I went to school for exercise science, um. I've got out of school, started teaching um fitness classes and uh kind of stayed with that through my corporate career and um. As I, you know, circling to the tail end of, you know, what makes me happy, I've decided to really just focus on. Pilates and and um and offering that as my full-time job. So it has been. It's roughly twenty years of Pilates plus whatever I was teaching before that.
Right? Yeah, I'm excited to have something new downtown. I know there were a bunch.
No, I was really excited, I can. I was really excited to see this and um for you to take it out of your home, right? And and move it into um. Public space, so it's well needed down here and I think to diversify the the difference and that's exactly what we're trying to do, so. I'm totally encouraged by this, I'm excited for you.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I'm I'm excited too. I think it's a great space, by the way, and I'm also excited to see you from downtown. Thank you for coming forward with. Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Um, is that where the florist used to be? Well, the florist was on the corner. It was where Ernie the Barber was. And then it became um a consignment store. And so is the second one in, it's not right on the end, that's where Jay Martin's is in what used to be the forest. Oh, that's, so it's great to have. Anything new. And you can do Pilates and then go get a pizza from. Yeah, something, right? You can can go to Moro and then get a muffin. Yeah. So. Thank you for bringing this to the downtown. I don't have any questions.
So we just with a motion to approve minor site.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Improve minor site plan. For. Root to ride for lobby. Studio. Located at. One Boston Road. Also, you know, uh, we use things.
It's just, uh, one other question. Are we the last two or are we the only? Approval needed for this?
Yes, I understand that that you, she has to go, Jen has to go to the building that was signed. Um, there wasn't existing sign here and depending on what you put down, you still have to go there if they wanted to what was put on sign because you're stationed down.
Right. But as far as we're the only thing stopping her opening up shop next week.
Yes. I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All favor, which one again?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll work the hour and he was. To mention, so we're only going to ask. Yeah. Much easier.
So just so you know, I'm pulled out to distinguish him. On this, it's a two-page review with the motion and the vote and then it gets filed with the town clerk and then you can pick up and it's probably. It's still a twenty day. You can pick up in a text and copy that one.
Oh, okay. So, so. Okay, so somebody could come and fill up for twenty days that they don't.
Within twenty days, I believe that's the case. I'll have to double check.
I can research right now.
We'll figure out and we can follow up with you tomorrow because um.
But in the meantime, I'm free to have a business.
You are because they voted.
Okay. It's.
Even if there is that, you can move forward. It, yeah, it's like for twenty.
Okay.
And there's nobody here speaking against us, so.
Okay. Right, right.
But I just want to verify that. Fuel is required, minor site, we don't do very many minor site. Um, we did a yoga studio one eighteen Turnpike. About a year and a half ago.
Well, everything's.
That's right, and we drafted that decision, which will actually be the boil plate, because you already. Treat that when you get that in. Anyway.
Okay, very good, great. Thank you. Have a good night, happy holidays.
Yeah, you too.
The next item.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, take care. Bye, Jen. Thank you. Oh, I would just like to say, thank you to Karina, she is a huge one of help to me getting me through the process. Really graciously, right?
Thank you, thanks for that. She's amazing.
Keep going on. Thank you. You. The next item is a approval not required, two forty one, two forty five Turnpike Road. Do you have anyone?
Yeah, I give.
Well, fair.
Sure. When we do. That's the endorsement. Against the ready to go.
This day is gonna go.
I hope so. There's work. Would you like me to give me the update? So um. Mr. David, the point is a survey?
I'm actually registered landscape park.
A landscape park, that's nice, sorry. With uh Bealton Thomas, and he's here representing um the applicant Park House two forty one LLC. Uh, this is an A and R that um. Is at two forty one and two forty five Turnpike Road thing, you just said. You recall two forty five is that outside stone facade, I mean that. We'll be sitting vacant for Bill's restaurant. Yeah, 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 so um. They own both those lots and they'll be coming for a new site plan and more impact development for a car condo project. Um, for which they've already been in front of the zoning board of the fields for. Uh, as for the variances or stuff like that. So um, before he does, before they do that. Um, they need to come in and get the lots joined so that as we go to site man, they're working on one lot, so there's no confusion. I think that's what we're here for. Um, good. One minute. One minute. Um, so this is in the business highway district. Um, with a small portion of the top left corner and the resident. Uh, who've identified the what was along with more. They show the paid parking area subject for two forty one, two forty five is going to be demolished anyway and they're joining lots. Doesn't necessarily show the subject there. So we looked at the deeds, we did, we looked through the eight items that are in the town code, mimic and the instructions for the. Um, embedded everything. Um, there is a parking engine that exists in between the two lots right now. That parking is not remaining until it's. Distinguished, not extinguished. Distincting the day, sorry, extinguished. Um, there's also um an asset agreement on front. Parallels to Turnpike Road that was there for some of these. So on. Purposes to, you know, join this lot, yeah. So that's kind of the general, do you want to add anything?
Uh, that pretty well covers it, I think. Um, as Karina said, the intent is to. Um, join the lots together to combine them as one larger lot. Demolish those buildings and then the applicant's intent is to. Redevelop the site and build a single building on it for what Karina mentioned as car condos, basically a. Two-story building with garage spaces on both floors for people to. Park their. Presumably, presumably fancy car, expensive cars, yes, yes, exactly. And so it will kind of form a little bit of a, you know. Maybe clubs, so to speak, with the members or the owners, um, you know, being able to share stories and look at each other's cars and that kind of thing. Um. It's coincidentally, there's no, there was no um. Um, connection with the adjacent property, the rad exotics, but it's. Kind of an ideal spot, they think, for this type of a use, considering that being next door. But the two businesses aren't connected in any way.
And maybe.
So in this particular case, as you can see, there's um going to be. Two lot lines or lot lines on two streets, Turnpike Road and Parkerville Road. Um, in our case, when this lot is redeveloped, it will consider Turnpike Road as the frontage. Where we do have um. We'll, we'll, we'll have three hundred and fifteen, almost three hundred and sixteen feet of frontage on that side. Um, where on the Parkerville Road. We, I don't believe we would make still the frontage. Yeah, it's minimum two hundred feet, so we wouldn't have the adequate frontage on Parkerville. Um, so frontage is coming off of Turnpike Road, there'll be a driveway on both. Turnpike Road and Parkerville, similar to the way it is now, there's one on each currently, um, but one. Driveway will be able to access um the lower level. And then the other driveway is intended to access the upper level. With them, there will be a driveway that um connects kind of the two levels that will go between, that would kind of run parallel to Turnpike Road.
And Parkerville, a distinct road and it's stated on the plan. So that if um they've been made aware that if there's any impacts to lifting stone walls or trees on town by the way, that maybe they will. And that'll be more obvious.
Yeah, I think that's like all open. Like all open.
Yeah. But we always say that.
It's be great if you put a stone wall in.
Well, that is, that driveway on Parkerville is a wide open expansive pavement. Um, the intent is to narrow it down to just more of a typical twenty-four foot wide driveway to then access into the. The building, to the lots, parking area. Um, I think there is one tree, maybe that's along that side, uh, but when we looked at the plan, it actually, after Karina pointed that out, it's actually on the property as opposed to being in the right of way, so. I don't know that we're gonna be able to. Save it based on the plan that we have, but we've got plans for additional trees anyway. Save it based on the plan that we have, but we've got plans for additional trees anyway.
Another question on the stone wall. I pull up the lot plan from the registry deeds and they, they show a stone wall in the back. And on both properties, it looks like it may be kind of. Is jointed or something, and they've broken up a little bit, but is that a body, is that on? What was that, like, what's it, or is it after backyard? Yeah, somebody's backyard.
Yes, exactly, that's the boundary line between the residential lots and Clifford, exactly.
Okay.
Correct.
Anybody, but there's a stone wall, you can see stone wall is a little symbol along the north.
Yep.
Showing up on that. Yeah, that's right, any questions, Mister?
No, no questions, it'd be nice to see something going.
I could too, so one, I couldn't really understand, what is this black line that gets drawn around the whole thing?
So, one of the items on the checklist is show the existing paved areas, so that's basically delineating the limit of the existing pavement that's out there.
So it was that and then the platforms, I guess that is, but I guess I would have been interested in seeing that stuff in the legend. Because it was just hard for me to understand what I was looking at. But other than that, I have.
Mister Murray? I have one question, thank you. So then. Frontage on the Business Highway was two hundred feet. Which goes three hundred and eighty-one, so. It looks to be good.
Make a motion to the planning board endorse the approval not required in our plan. Well, two thousand twenty-two, for the voter's address. Two forty-one, two forty-five Turnpike Road. Twenty-seven, person eight and nine, request.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in agreeable, yes?
Mills, yes?
Yeah, yeah.
Here, yeah. So the planning board will sign endorsement form tonight and will get the plane sign as well and they'll let you know.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for waiting.
Yeah.
No problem. Thanks a lot, and again, as mentioned by that last act, since as well, thanks to Karina for helping us get through this. Process smoothly and hopefully the same will go for the site plan and. Other applications will be back for likely at the beginning of the board.
So, the site plan, just so you know, make sure you look at the trees that are needed, like straight native and everything.
Yes.
Because we've, some applicants who go back and forth a lot.
I was trying to look at that previous plan to see what they had proposed, so.
Make sure you don't want that.
Sure, sure, okay. Great, great, thank you. Okay, sounds good.
It was nice to see that something in that site.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how long those buildings have been vacant, but it's. Twenty years probably anyway. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I mean. Yeah, yeah, I know there were some complaints. From some other residents about the condition of the buildings and kind of trying to secure them from vandalism and whatnot, so I think that. Owner's been trying to accommodate those requests, working with the building inspector and some of those things as we were saying. Hopefully things will go along smoothly with the approvals and whatnot, and they'll get going on getting that site developed, obviously. Thanks a lot.
So Colleen is just learning to get the Marla and the plan in the way I'm out, so we don't forget to sign. In the interim, as she's doing that, we have the next item, the next chapter. And being on open space monitoring report, this is twenty-two. Usually plays out this way, we get to the fourth in June, finalize, probably the beginning of July, so we go forward and then we have. A breather and get the presentation going, so Joe Zeller's with Lucas Environmental. I believe this is their. Third year of open space monitoring and he zoomed in. He would love to be in person, but it was.
With a lot of accidents in the pantry, roads, I don't think you could leave Joe.
Yeah, I don't know if it was quite that bad, but I did hear that there were a number of, of small vendor vendors and. The plows were out this morning, I was surprised to see. But glad to be back before the board to present the year's edition of the Open Space Monitoring Report. I think this is actually our fourth year of presenting. And as in past years. Yeah, Karina and the Open Space Preservation Commission have selected a number of subdivisions, open space areas for us to take a look at. And including the report, this year we have seven sites. Those including Stubtoe Lane Extension. Palmer Inter Meadow, that's Metcalf Lane. South Village Estates, that's Fiddleneck Lane, Rolling Acres, which is Sunrise Drive. South Borough Estates, which is Ashley Road and Davis Road. Admiral's Glen, Vickery Hills Condos, that's Admiral's Lane, Charles Court and Glenn Court. And Chestnut Meadow, which is a new one, Dairy Farm Lane. And. But this year's sites are all easements, there are no dedicated town-owned open space areas in this year's report. And I think as Karina mentioned, in June, we did the inspections of all the sites that occurred on June fourteenth and June twenty-second. What I figured I would do tonight is just, I don't want to take too much time, there's a lot of detail in the report, I'm certainly not going to get into all that detail. I'd like to give a brief introduction to each of the sites. Touch on some of the encroachments that were observed. My intent was to keep it general on the encroachments, as far as. Ones that were observed at the subdivision without necessarily defining the. The lots or addresses where those were observed, unless the commission would like me to do that, like I could do that. I'm sorry, unless the board would like me to do that, I'm used to being before conservation commission, so that comes out naturally. And then. Review the action items that we're recommending. And then at the end, just finish with an overall recommendations moving forward on future. Open space monitoring reports. So, before I get into it, are there any questions or comments that the commission would like to? We know about and. Can proceed.
It was not a good plan to me, if you want to. Sounds good.
Okay, great. So the first, one of the sites we looked at was Stubtoe Lane Extension, that's Stubtoe Lane. It's a three-lot subdivision on a cul-de-sac approved in nineteen eighty-eight. It's a relatively small open space, less than three tenths of an acre at the rear of the lots. Open spaces primarily consist of forested upland. And in general, man-made alterations that were observed included. Some significant recent yard encroachment within the open space and several smaller areas of apparent encroachment. By lawn and brush and leaf files, leaf files. Invasive species are present, but not, not particularly bad at this site. The encroachments that were noted include construction, filling, tree cutting. And landscaping. There was, as I noted, some fairly significant alteration and yard encroachment at several of the, of the properties. And again, relatively minor lawn encroachment and leaf piles at several of the other. Properties.
Go ahead, have you visited this site before, or is this the first time?
This was the first time for this one, the. I was checking if we have a previous visitation on that for. No, we don't have a previous visit at this site in the record. As far as action items, recommend, recommended action items. We recommend that the fairly significant landscaping yard expansion activity at a couple of the properties. Be verified and make sure that they, they are in fact in the open space. And there's also some potentially, some potential encroachment onto some of the mass DCR property. So those need to be verified and the extent of that encroachment verified. We also, as in the past, recommend that the property owners. Abutting the open space be notified of their responsibilities regarding the open space areas. And requesting that any potential encroachments or debris of yard or yard waste be addressed as necessary. And this is going to be again, a common recurring recommended action item. Since the open space easement is enforceable by the building inspector. That ensure that the building inspector is aware that the open space of the open space and the possible encroachments. The second site we looked at was Palmerter Meadow, that's Metcalf Lane. That's a subdivision approved in two thousand and six, consists of seven lots. This is a, the open space can, it's comprised of an irregularly shaped variable width, open space easement. And a number of the lots totals about one point four acres. It's primarily forested and it borders a wetland. Yard waste piles were observed in several locations, and that was the primarily, the primary encroachment observed at, at this site. The open space is thirteen percent of the total. Area of the subdivision. Observed alterations included dumping, tree cutting. Field clearing. But again, no major encroachments of yard. Into the open space were, were noted. As far as action items. Again, as I previously stated, notifying the property owners. With open space easements, abutting, abutting the open space easements of its presence and their responsibilities. And again, notifying the building inspector that, so you should wear that. Of the possible encroachments. The third site was South Village Estates, which is Fiddleneck Lane. This was approved in two thousand, modified in two thousand and five. The open space consists primarily of forested upland. And is relatively free of invasive vegetation. Again, it's a variable width, open space easement on four lots. And as far as encroachments, some of the open space has been mowed. Some construction with some wooden structures, small. Sort of like jungle gym or structure, some dumping of leaf litter and some landscaping. Action items. Include. Verifying if one of the driveways actually appears to have been constructed within the open space, so this needs to be verified whether it was permitted. Verify if mowing is permitted within the open space. Between a few of the lots, you know, these are the open space access ways from the road into the open space. These are. Required to remain in an open and natural state for the purpose of passive pedestrian use. But these areas have been maintained as mowed lawn, it's unclear whether that is specifically allowed or not. And again, notifying the owners. Of the open space and the building inspector. The fourth site is Rolling Acres and that's Sunrise Drive. This is a five-lot subdivision. Comprises about one point six acres at the rear of the lots, again, variable width. Relatively little invasive vegetation. In the wooded areas, but there was some additional within some of the edges. Some, again, some significant encroachment was observed at this site. Get a little more detail on that in a second. The open space totals a little over ten percent of the, of the properties. And again, portions are mowed. And landscaped. There were a number of encroachments into the open space at this site. One, including apparent recent tree cutting, clearing and significant fill. Within the open space area and it's pretty, was pretty clearly based on the location of a stone wall that it was within the open space. Also, a few other of the properties had some fairly significant lawn encroachment. And there's also a shed and wire fencing within the open space somewhat of the lots. And minor, some are more minor issues such as yard waste piles. In the open space area. Action items include. Determining what the open space requirements are for this easement is, the requirements were not defined in any of the documents I had reviewed. Verify the encroachment activities. Noted in the report are in violation of the open space requirements, since it's not apparently. Written what those requirements are. Notify again the property owners of the open space easements and their requirements. And again, notifying the building inspector, and in the case of some of the more significant encroachments. Recommend that the board may want to meet with the property owners regarding some of those, those areas. Fifth site was South Borough Estates, that's Ashley Road and Davis Road. The twenty-one lot subdivision. Includes three acres of open space easements located at the rear of the subdivision. It's a little bit difficult to get access to this open space, can come in off of one of the abutting. Subdivisions. And but the, none of the open space accessways are marked in any way with any signage or any kind of indication that it's actually access to an open space area. The current state of the open space is primarily forested upland. And encroachments in general included brush piles, landscaping and yard encroachment, again, some of which are significant. The width of the easement varies from. The width of the easement varies from ten feet to sixty feet. And comprises almost eleven percent of the total area of the site. Neither the definitive plan or the declaration of restrictive covenants. Or declaration of protective covenants contain any reference to the the open space use requirements. Observed manmade alterations included construction dumping, tree cutting and landscaping. And that's primarily associated with some yard encroachment that has occurred at a number of locations. Action items for South Borough Estates, again, clarify. The. Status of the open space at this site, there's a location where the open space actually. Intersects with a right of way and a utility easement. Where a driveway was put in through the open space. I think the status of the open space within that right of way is not clear. Verify the apparent significant encroachments on several of the lots. Verify if some of the chain link fencing that was observed. Is located within the open space and some of the areas. It's particularly where you have like a ten foot wide open space. Along a property line, if the property line is not marked well in any way, it's hard to be sure whether you're in the open space or not. In some of those locations, it appeared that the fencing did cross the open space, but that would need to be verified.
Can just a quick question, on that fencing, was there any like? Purpose for it, like the pictures, it looks like there is a reason for it, do you think it was someone like putting up a property line?
It could be property line fence, but. It's a, you know, it's a chain link fence, it looked like it's a property line fence. Based on other things I was I was seeing, though, it looked like it was. Probably across the across the easement, so. You know, the easement extends from the property line, so that they fenced in. Apparently part of the easement with the fence. And again, notifying the owners and the building inspector and meeting with property owners for the more significant. Encroachments. The sixth site was Admiral's Glen, Victory Hills condominiums. It's an age restricted forty unit condo housing community off Mount Victory Road. The open space components here are a small triangle of open space. Located next to a stormwater basin. And then there is a. Roughly thirty seven hundred and fifty square foot area of open space that. Was created in association with the previous. Subdivision, South Borough Estates. Where Admiral's Glen required a right of way and through an open space area of easement. And then as a result, it created a new area of open space. Abutting Admiral's Glen and South Borough Estates. As far as manmade alterations, landscaping essentially. And this is primarily around the stormwater basin, it was unclear. In the. Documents review. What was allowed within that open space, looking back at. Historic aerial photos, it looks like that area has been mowed since it was constructed. But the portion of that mowing is within the open space, just not clear if that was in allowed use or not. And the last of the areas is Chestnut Meadow, which is Dairy Farm Lane. This is a twelve lot lower impact development of Chestnut Hill Road. Under construction still at the time I was out there. Little over two acres of. Of that open space was temporary open space comprised of lots five and six. And I think it was a three year. Those were to be held as temporary open space for three years, which time has passed. Those have no longer included in the open space. The open space now consists of easement around the. Perimeter of the of the lots around the the backside of the lots and that's again a variable with open space easement. The observed alterations included. Dumping and landscaping and erosion control materials. There were a couple of locations where the open space, which consists primarily of. A meadow at this time. Had been mowed, path had been mowed through the meadow and it was to allow for dumping of. Grass clippings within the open space, so there's a mode path to a big pile of grass clipping. Dump at a couple of locations within the open space easement. One of the other concerns at this particular location is the invasive species. Very, very dense along the edge of the open space and the tree line. And it looks like the bittersweet is encroaching fairly significantly in a few locations into the meadow. Portion of the open space. There's, at the time I was there, there was construction occurring. At one location, the silt fence, erosion control barrier had been buried by a soil stockpile. And no additional silt fence had been installed. Wasn't close to a wetland to know if no real concern as far as any erosion getting into a wetland at that point, but it was. Within or right at the edge of the open space. As far as the action items for Chestnut Meadow. Verify that the open space language is being included on the plans and deeds for the individual lots as required. Under conditions of the decision. Verify whether they require galvanized spikes, again, required under the decision. Have been installed at the open space boundaries. I didn't see any of those when I was out there, they. Possible they were there and just very well hidden by the tall meadow grass vegetation. But that should be verified whether they've been installed or not. Again, ensure that the appropriate erosion controls are are being installed and maintained. The invasive vegetation management is recommended and I it looks at. Like the conditions actually of the decision allow that for this particular. Subdivision. With a filing with the conservation commission as habitat improvement. And again, notifying the property owners with open spaces, presence of the open space and any restrictions regarding that. So that kind of goes over the individual sites. Anyone have any specific questions to any of those sites before I get into the recommendations?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Joe, I have a question that is probably not in your purview, but I'm just gonna ask it anyway, is this invasive species? The bittersweet is everywhere, it's not even an open space, it's in like a lot of like right away town property. What, like what do you do about that?
It's it's a real tough one to get rid of. It depends on how badly, if it's small stuff and it's not real dense, you can. Have a program of of hand removal. But typically, it's it's pretty bad and it requires herbicide treatment, cutting generally cutting the stems and painting on herbicide. And it usually requires several years to get on top of it.
It's pervasive in this town, just driving by, it's killing all the trees, it's throwing up all the trees on our right away. So it's very worrisome because I think we're gonna have a lot of damage on our trees.
It will it will strangle trees and I've seen it in some sites actually pulling the trees down, there was one, I think. Two years ago, one of the sites that we looked at where there were trees being pulled down by the bittersweet. I don't remember which one it was.
Breakneck Hill before they got the. Someone from that downtown was out there, did a walk for open space. And he deemed it the worst infestation of bittersweet field ever seen.
Is it because the soils are conducive to that plant that is more prevalent in some communities?
Yeah, it's it's pretty prevalent in in many, many communities, it's not just South Borough, it's pretty much anywhere you go. But it's it is spread, I think, you know, some birds eat the fruit and they spread the seeds. If there's any disturbance, you know, any kind of sunny spot created in a forest or soil disturbance, it can easily take root. And it and it just really. Grows, you know, quickly and can really take over an area. Pretty rapidly. And it's and once it's established, then it's, you know, seeding itself, the fruits are just dropping, you know, from the plants and it just perpetuates that way. So one of the other things to consider is during construction. Sometimes soils are brought in, which have the seeds present. And that is the way that it spreads. Or even on a particular site, if soils are moved around on the site during construction, you can spread the seeds that way. That's why I think oftentimes we recommend a construction phase. Invasive species management plan on sites that have invasive species present, where you're going to be disturbing the areas where those invasive species are present.
Thank you.
So as far as overall, if I could finish up with just overall recommendations moving forward. We continue to recommend. Requiring sufficient permanent markers in the field to enable accurate location of the open space boundaries. The phenos survey monuments are helpful. Concrete markers are helpful, sometimes these get overgrown and are tough to find, so you know, in addition. Signage might be considered also, would it be? I think in some cases easier for property owners to see the signage indicating that it's open space. And just reminding them that it's there and that they may have some responsibilities regarding that. Also signage at locations that are intended to be access points would be useful. It's often very tough to get into some of these sites, the. Use of the site may be defined as, you know, passive recreation, walking, but. If you can't get to it or don't know where the locations are that allow you to get to it, it's tough to do that. We also continue to recommend that some form of vegetation management be allowed for invasive vegetation as just discussed. Within the open space. We're also this year recommending that the town maybe look into. Updating the open space map layer on the town G I S. These are very helpful in going out and doing monitoring, however. In many locations are incomplete or inaccurate and not that useful. And makes make things even more confusing, so updating that would be helpful and it would allow a way for, you know, the. Townspeople to just more easily locate, be aware of location of open space easements or parcels. And as we have recommended in the past. Recommended town prepare some type of process to address any infractions or. Incursions into the open space such as a letter. Form letter to to the property owners. I'm not sure if the town has instituted that or not, I know we've recommended it a few times, I'm not sure if that has been considered or implemented at this point. But that pretty much finishes up. My talk and I'm gonna answer any questions that I can if the board has any.
I just wanna point out that. We did send open space presentation. Were in contact with them pretty regularly, so. And then also. But we'll pass on and she can use it for the. And then you reference updating the open space database and that's the deed research database that we have. That was prepared up to two thousand and eighteen, so. That's where we have been trying to budget some money to update that, maybe to get us out of that on board. And I'm still working on downloading the Google Drive files from. Yeah, so then it's on town, Google Drive and then download.
So do these reports get?
Not yet. I guess we can do that.
It has been a recommendation that the reports get included into the database, but.
Mister Mel.
Joe, thanks, much appreciated as always, eye opening when you do this. Quick question, I I did see that that a couple of pictures, it looked like there were some other people in the shots, maybe landscapers, but I'm curious if anyone. Questioned what you were doing or came out.
Yes, I think those are generally the property owners who would come out and question what was going on. And they said, then say, oh, am I in trouble? So I said, I'm just reporting things. But yeah, at a number of sites, the property owners do come out and just ask what. What I'm doing and what their responsibilities are relative to the open space. So some some are aware that there's open space and in often cases not.
So that they're aware that someone would be on the side at some point within the two week time range and then we're welcome to go out and ask if this.
So, Karina, did anyone call you after Joe was on site saying, I know I. Cleaning things up or anything like that?
No, I had a call from a resident and I was in this case. I don't know. With a question about somebody else's encroachment on the somewhere else. And I told him that eventually this would be presented.
Yeah, so one of the other recommendations is the open space layer on the G I S map. And I know we're trying to get some money for an update on our G I S, is this included in this? Have you thought about an open space layer on our G I S map?
Well, there is, there is currently.
That's what I mean, like we'll be updating the whole thing if we get the money.
Hopefully, we have a meeting actually next Monday looking at.
Software and.
You know, it's between IT and DPD, so hold count just to replace it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Joe. It's illuminating every time and every time I just sit here like how shameful it is and then. It's so hard to reinforce. I feel like it's a lot of an education process.
I I agree.
Corresponding. At least we're getting things documented and to create a history of we can look back at this information.
When we make such an effort to have open space, right? And it's just. How to kind of reinforce it when it passes out of our hands and into homeowners. I think there's something.
Well, what what did we do in the past? Didn't we do something like that? But it had to go to the select board or something? I know we would, we had talked. We had talked before about like. Partnering with the select board and really. Addressing with the clear violations, like they've got to do something. So the sort of like. Struggling to worry like just how do we, you know, should the enforcement officer be here when when this report happens at the same time? So they they hear it and like, what can we do about this? You know, it's a struggle with. You know, the next step from our role, is it our role or is it?
Well, enforcement. But this, I'm thinking just a step before that, like just kind of a educational. You know, thank you for being a steward of open space in the town itself. But you know, these are your responsibilities. For something, just some basic feel good.
And speaking to Andrew, I know that, I think in the past. Dawn was, you know, trying to propagate more than open space reservation. Like take on some of these roles and. You know, if they're gonna have to draw or something like that. Do that, but I do recall something.
On top, we saw someone on.
I think the building, you know, building. They also.
But I'm on, so a lot of it seems like there's yard waste, lawn clippings. So I think some of that could. Education would help if people were more aware. And I wonder how much of that is property owners and how much of that is landscaping? Because I know from, I have, we we don't have a landscaper, a married one. Or I married to my, are my landscaper, but on the three sides they all do and they blow all the leaves from off the sides onto my property. So, you know, they don't really, the landscape stuff really care, but if the homeowners are more aware, maybe they can.
Well, I know some landscapers they charge less if they dispose of the clippings. We have neighbors, they don't have a place to cut their grass. They get charged extra because they have to own the way. So I I understand how that could easily be happening or even though. Mow at the neighbors and then come mow your place and then, oh. And the homeowner, why not even though? Very possible.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
And I could be naive too, but.
No, I'm sure. Well, I know whether the homeowners know or not, it's possible that some may not know. And so if you're going on the town website and our GIS given up today, is there open space? You know, is there another way for them to look up on their property to see if they have open space or. Is there another map or something that's somewhere on our? It's in the master plan.
Right now, the deep research database is is launched in public use. It's, we have it internally for some reason, you know, often some of the deeds didn't carry the open state space restriction as required. In the. Condition or restrict the covenants that restrict the space, there are requirements to. A lot of times to, and they, it, when they keep that. And now those summaries, if you look at it, show where is lacking. You know, so it's a whole process of slowly grinding through it and fixing it a little bit. Every year, we do a little bit more, a better understanding. So this is very helpful because we already sense a guideline. And when Andrew asked about, well, is this the first time you, you know, looked at this project, the form actually says. Day of the inspection and then prior inspection date. So some of these, we're gonna start going again to see where it's trapped. We have a few more new sites that still have been put out for this fiscal year. But, you know, some of these were in instruction like Chelsa Meadow.
Well, Chelsa Meadow, that's still kind of under that. And I know, so I looked up those deeds to see if the open space. And there were, most of them were, and I don't think all the lots are sold there. So most of them were, but one of them. One of them doesn't. In one, they trans, they had the original deed and then they transferred. It to someone in their family or something. Because it was for a dollar. And that did not carry.
Because in the bill, in the viewpoint software online permitting, when we sign off. We specifically say, please note the commission. They come in by address now, so we know lots. So I have this map. Can see when the building, so there's a few left, but. You're right, if you look in there, you'll see comments and any that. Pinpoint, you know, here's this and this is required now, please note your other conditions that require. Yeah, there's still one. Inspection because at some point they want that. So, and I know that.
Aren't stockpiles required to be? So would the board want me to write a letter? An educational letter for review and then. At some point, I can go back and look at the past inspections they just sent the. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be supportive. You're right, we did do something. I have a folder. We have a letter, I know we sent them out to the property owner before. Joe goes out to inspect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you.
We had. In the Dropbox. Action plan with Shox's comments in the group. And then also today we received an email. She drafted up some potential based on a new guideline, boundary. And they're on the screen here. Did they get up in the desktop? Yeah, so they would have been put in this app and whatever you've got on. But she kind of drafted, she originally had drafted some boundaries back when the guidelines were first coming out. But then she updated some of these scenarios based on Shox's input.
Karina?
Yeah.
Does it have to be contiguous?
No, there's a certain percentage.
Because can can we consider potentially that thirty nine point seven acres that the EMC property people came in as part of that? Which is farther down, right? Just a little bit. For somewhere back here.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So, and that was brought up. And it was kind of a very virgins summer meeting that. Yellow ass. Southborough people, Southborough official members to attend this Zoom meeting to talk about. They intend to sell property. From the residential zone. Over near Deerfoot, but not access to Deerfoot. It would be through an easement from the Dell property on the west side.
There's only twenty percent buildings to be. Right at the station, the main station. And it has to be at least five acre.
That would be close to. That's close to forty acres.
Yeah.
That would be, I mean, if we can do it.
So they talked about a board B. Like, are they always selling the residential lot? Because there are a couple other industrial. To a couple other blocks.
So the whole industrial thing is going for sale December fifteenth. They're reserving the residential lot and they wanted to talk to us about. Instead of selling it as a residential acreage, would we be willing to think about it as a forty B? They would block off access to the neighborhood roads, which was Fairview and. Deerfoot. And then they would grant that easement and we were like, of course we'd be receptive to that. Because that solved so many problems being out at a lake that's regulated, Crystal Pond and you can access it. You know, south to West Borough with the Rotary. Or you can go north to Route Nine, east or west. It would, it honestly would be perfect if they could get a fire. For the red, for the industrial. And it's very high level, so they said they wouldn't, they wouldn't mention any easements or anything like that in that teaser, but. And then the the residential was quickly coming there after, though, likely in their number, right?
So I think the older would be easier. For them than do, or easier for anybody. There was a. Well, either zoned as.
And so the the stack, and now the next steps for the process are we're just waiting. Where do we put our recommendations in on MBTA?
We haven't gone to the state yet because the live board's gonna discuss. And then. Fortunately, get comment back to us. But this is very high level. I don't think we need to send off kind of that in the back. And we did.
So this was, I mean, I could, I have a meeting here. Here's where we are at. MHP has identified through our key process a group of qualified consultants. The list includes private consultants as well as qualified staff in various regional planning agents. Where this one hundred and seventy five MBT MBTA communities are located. All consultants are fully up to speed with the requirements of the new law and the requirements for compliance. And in fact, some of them are already working with other MBT communities for that goal. So this is basically a short term, but it's twenty thousand dollars. And and they'll. Consultant will get hooked with us and I actually did see something come in.
So Colleen. So for all her submission, right, that you did for the grant?
All that good stuff, but, you know, somebody that knows what they're doing.
So we have the shot, so so Colleen and maybe populated. The online form for the action plan that too at the end of January. And distributed it to Shox and the select board, the select would send that they would respond, but I think by January third. Yeah, and then Shox responded right away. So once we get select board, then. You can culminate the comments. More filled out, more bells and whistles, action plan. And I think that anything like this or firework shows that we're already giving. People steps towards it and people thought some of the stuff they like to see the brainstorming and. That kind of, and they just released that their model or something.
Yeah, it's.
Compliance model is ready, DHCD put out a link to their compliance model, which has like three. Actions to do, some mapping and something else. But that's. As you move towards the. Third day. So. Moving in the right direction.
Thank you. So, so the mass, mass dot gov has a lot of. It's almost, where do you start? So that's really where. They have an app you can download into your PIS. There's so much out there. That, you know, will help getting us started will be wonderful.
Yeah, someone who's done it before. Maybe Colleen, the great job getting that first draft and the action.
It's just checking.
It's good. Anything you do is appreciated.
Didn't get it for the MBTA communities. They had a consultant do it. And they did it with an overlay. So that's one way to go. It's not a bad idea. And you don't change the overlay's own.
And in experience with this grant. May, I'm talking experience consultant, he can lay out the path. And then maybe we can get another grant.
It seems to be the way it is. Describe the shorter term to get, to get you in, into it, but not to the end of compliance. Yeah, it's compliant.
So. It's an actual item tonight, do we need to agree with Chelsea? That it's to the. It'll probably be helpful. He.
Well, yeah.
They added, so Sarah Pecker, prior to this, I was wanting to talk to Chelsea. Had some historical information from working. During the downtown district, and everything like that. So she had some history laying some of this out. And early on. And then developed some maps and I think that. They, Chelsea asked her to populate some of the action items to embellish the history that she was exposed to.
Something we wouldn't know.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Can you just go through that? Because I looked through it, it looked fine to me. So everybody's on the same.
And that form. You can't judge the book by its cover because the form only lets you print. The way it prints online. So when you hit yes or no, it's really difficult to read.
And it prints out like I was.
Yeah.
You know, so doesn't look as good as it.
I don't think I blacked. You know, so. As we see, questions are.
Checking box.
Checking boxes and then there's keywords. But Chelsea's comments are in blue, so we'll get to something.
Yes, really.
So you're in the Colleen and.
Oh, I look, yeah.
Because I know there was something in the previous.
So.
And then do that. Make it smaller. Get to. Move comments. Here we go. Please within the T A, meet a real station. So just describes it. We can wear it in. Next one then. Please briefly describe other members of the court team developing. So Chelsea including that they were trying to help. Or they were simply. When they started talking about it early on.
It's just more grammar, I think we just need to spark it for the way it's.
Okay. The grammar. So it just needs to be, you know, refined. To make sure there's no typos. Please describe any relevant strategies, goals, objectives, work that has been done to play. So this is true. We have a housing document. It's up to you. Your master plan. Right. Five days to change spending. So I was just showing that South Row hasn't been just. Sitting on the side. They've been out for doing things. That related. Please basically describe the housing work underway. And this is relevant because Chelsea had that subcommittee that was researching South Hill School to perhaps include that in the MBTA's history. So that committee would pull out and see what the options are to reuse that building. Yeah. And Jesse Tham is on that as well as my trust. New forty R, other open zones. I'm not quite showing that.
Well, yeah, so I think we can do either.
Oh, when the approach.
A forty R requires. Well, it says all other.
Please briefly describe the potential district location optional. Any attaching any supporting documents, show planning work for community and learning devices. And we would issue self addressed, key potential shade district that puts Sarah in definition. Please see attached these drafts for three before the final release. At this point, Chelsea is planning what are, looking at some alternative sites, it's only twenty percent. Of the overall fifty acres. Within about half mile. One location being discussed along nine, making the brush properties, the infrastructure. Water or sewer, well, they do have town water. Yeah. And there's only very, very, very limited public sewer on the framing. So, you know, things like that we have to.
Would we call ourselves a city?
No.
Yeah, like that's just like that.
Yeah. Please, please describe the potential district. Attention is pointing at the children's planning rooms regarding. It just refers that to the. Timeline. And then what, how things more. Free and successful company of those. So just, you know, just kind of additional language to. Fill out. An idea. Timelines. And made a number changes. This is a great start, I think. Right. That's a comment to change.
That's us. So that, so maybe look at that and see if that should come away in front of that. Create a.
Oh, I see.
Doesn't feel like I.
Yeah. I don't think for anything that they know at home. So is everyone okay?
Yes.
To move forward? Okay. Move on. Session Saint Mark's Street relocation going along. So you just all over you. It's been rescheduled. Yeah, I just have a. So I reached out to Kathy Cook just to follow up from the September letter that we had sent. And that we haven't received a response to. And she responded that it's on her to do with decide how to respond, but it's not near the top. And also Karina reached out to Saint Mark's to ask if they had, if they intend to submit for something. For the.
Did anyone else get an email from David Perry?
Yes. So, and I think. Devin's been working on a new comprehensive report, which will rest on. But necessarily.
No, just thanks to Marnie for helping. One of the comments I think Jesse had made last meeting was to kind of. Keep it within playing word per view and also. You know, Marnie's been helping just to make it more concise and I think really helped, I think, with putting. Just in perspective context, so it's more readable. Right now it's only a couple of pages. And I just wanted to say, if anybody's watching, thank you to a number of people who have really provided some information. John Parent from the facility gave some information. Had to do with flooding of the library as well as library trustee in sort of helping out. So even though, and providing a lot of information on reports and things that have been. You know, performed throughout the years, actually, to go back almost a decade having to flooding up a library. So even the library doesn't have fall under playing words per view. It's, you know, the flooding of the library has been so. You know, it's been trapped for almost ten years. And so just as a town planner, we have to think about, you know, what effect does. Moving an intersection have on anything in that area, any of our public assets? At really. And, you know, I, so we're trying to sort of sort that out and put that a little bit into perspective. And just giving the information that we have.
So is this the, the report that's under forty one? Yes, so as opposed to looking at what the plans for the road and. We're just going to.
Well, that's a point. That's a good question, so I started with a, an outline. You know, it's been sort of. In what are, basically it's part of the concerns with moving into. But the way that section reads, this is national law chapter forty one, section A one I. It says that the planning board has opportunity to offer a report to the select board. To make such investigations and apps and reports and recommendations in connection. You know, with anything referred to as deemed desirable. So that's pretty broad. That's not exactly what we're doing. We're trying to keep this into a concise letter for the planning board. And. You know, so as it turns out, I'll just. Will let you know that some of the information that I received was a report that the library had commissioned back in two thousand thirteen from Pear. Our Pear. Are. And, you know, that sort of assessed the drainage situation in the area and gave them sort of short term and long term. Implementating from short term fix essentially, long term plan. And then, you know, ten years later or so, now we have the other work that V H B has done. And. Whether that is helping the library, I don't really know. It doesn't seem to mesh exactly with plan, our plan. But, you know, have to imagine it's helping, hopefully not making it worse. But it's difficult, and I don't think it's making it worse, I think it's helping, but to what degree? So I think the idea is that anything that gets done there shouldn't make the situation of the library worse. And from the higher pair report, from what I'm seeing. And has been mentioned by others in town and members of the library work to proceed. The. Rainage issue may be coming from the tip of the triangle. And that's really evident on the pair report. That's what they're thinking was ten years ago. I don't know what they're thinking of now because there are different engineers. And I would say, so my thing is, you know, we have our own town engineers, kind of. We have, we have V H B as our consulting engineer, but because this is a project that hasn't come to the planning board. Our conservation has the opportunity to look at it because it's a private property, so it's not public. And it hasn't come to the planning board under conservation regulations, they give the opportunity to look at it. So that's going to be one of the recommendations. So, again, I think the plans are all our own line. I'm not an engineer, I can't look, you know, can't really understand them, they're very difficult.
Okay.
To read. I'm not an engineer either, but I've worked on a lot, but.
Okay. As an engineer, there's.
But I.
State form. Plans. You know, the state is very regular. Yeah. Can I ask one thing? Going to bring all the menus I've planned. They didn't specify, but in, in responding to a quick request. He, he said about. Well. Well, contention of someone happens at town. That, that, with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. The next thing, the second protection by law tree policy. I have no new information there, so we can have a discussion on one nine and I will. With the board for homework, before we have the bylaw with the changes in the tree policy. It's on the Dropbox for last meeting on the twenty first. And I'll also work on moving some of the tree replacement. In the bylaw into the policy. Because I think there's a lot there that could be. Better handled as policy, because then we could see how things work and what changes. Go along rather than being. That is still. For that, that, that. Oh, I have one more really quick then. On the G I S. We, I was in the meeting with. Rena and Colleen involved. An old Orchard Beach has its public shade tree as a layer of G I S. Every tree. You can click on it and it shows the street view and what kind it is and it. Yeah, it was, sounds exactly like this. I was like, I said to the guy, you had to be a tree.
Wow, that's, that's a, that's a lot of work.
Yeah, that'd be very cool. All right. Planner's report.
All right. First. I'm gonna make this quick because we can always do follow. So the end of town meeting twenty twenty three is March twenty fifth, Saturday, March twenty fifth. And. There were three warrant articles, four warrant articles, placeholders that we have. And I can tell you for adding the downtown district to the design by law, one seventy four eleven D is a table there. We want to add it right next to Business Village District, so it's the same requirements under the BB district that we have set out. So Colleen drafted a legal ad for planning board public hearings. And she also drafted one.
Very basic and.
But clear, yeah. So we want to do so. We have to, and that's to open the public hearing for that on January twenty third.
Yes.
Yeah, because we're too close to January ninth now, you've been three and a half weeks. So that's the plan for that. Does the planning board want to do public hearings for the tree by law and the seed growth again? Even though it's not required? Because then we have to do the same thing, get the, we had started on January twenty third. Then we'll have February sixth because the warrant is going to go to print on. February twenty fourth and the select board wants to sign it February twenty first. So we'll have January twenty third and February sixth. To iron out any details on the changes to those two. So you don't, you know, so close to not having a limit on. Closest. Can you give me those six? So, um, the delivery before the warrant. Yes, and in the Dropbox, you'll see the schedule. But, um, the warrant, the plan, the select board wants to sign the warrant on Tuesday, February twenty first and goes to the printer on the twenty fourth. Um, so usually we have until before the twenty first, before that, to get them, you know, a few days before that to draft and get it in the warrant for them to sign. So our meetings would be open the public hands on January twenty third. Continue to February sixth. Get something to the select board prior to February twenty first, but the public hands can still continue all the way to the, until the end of town meeting. But that's when we'll get them out. So do we want to open public hearings again?
Yeah, I think we should. Yeah, I, I, I think we air. And let people know, come, you know.
Maybe we can try to email specific people on them, come in and talk to them.
About their concern. That's.
And then that leaves Debbie's, um, requested warrant article, uh, for environmental controls, um.
Yeah, I have to be honest, I haven't done much with it since the last time we met, except for that, you know, um, talking to Heather Albert of Board Health and finding out what they have makes it pretty apparent that we don't need anything elaborate. I think I had shown some language of a very simple bylaw that Westboro has, and it's pretty much what I've discussed, that there should be no noise that, you know, comes over the ground each other's. You know, how many feet over? You have to decide with that, that's the perimeter, or is it two hundred feet from the perimeter or something like that? Um, I, I think it's worth it to pursue that by law. Um, and, um, it's pretty simple. Uh, if we, if we, I'm still looking at some others.
And.
Oh, yeah, that's the thing.
Just note, Debbie, that we have to get the ad in the paper by January fourth. Okay, just right around the corner and there is Christmas. See, the downtown district sign is very simple. We're just adding a word which most people shouldn't object to because they were in that district anyway and the sign regulations aren't changing. It was over there, just hold the define. And she can point to that. But January fourth is going to come around very quickly.
Okay, so then I would, um, uh, see what you can get.
Can I?
Wow, January fourth, so before our next meeting.
Before our next meeting.
I bring everything.
Yeah.
Now.
And what's the January fourth deadline?
That's, we have to get. Before your public hearing. More. So it'll publish on, um, the Monday after that, which is, uh, one of the nine. And nine, right? And so we usually have to have some kind of draft ready for the public to see and to give to the select board. Um, so there's some kind of. Okay, something.
Okay, we'll see my next steps with, we don't have another meeting. I presented something. We had, I think, one comment from somebody from the audience. Uh, and, um, I had been looking at something a little more elaborate and then found it, you know, kind of like bookends, very simple version and a more something with instruments where we take measurements and then to weigh the two. And then after speaking to Board of Health, it seems like the simpler made is, you know, what, what Westboro had passed. Um, and I'd like to go with something like that, but slightly modified. So what, what, what would I do then for this? For this board? Kind of draft.
I would recommend taking the Westboro, copying it, modify it to what you think is right.
Yeah.
And then try to figure out where you could put it in our council.
Okay.
And then that would be our recommendation for us to review.
Okay, and then so there's no town council or anything? I have no advice from town council?
Right, yeah.
No.
Eventually.
Eventually, like during the re, during the hearings?
That's a very important, hopefully, of the, put the final language in.
Yeah.
Sure. Inconsistent with the rest of the, the bylaw, you know, how.
Okay, okay, yeah, I can do that.
And, um, just note that both Colleen and I have the week between Christmas and New Year's. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we're taking the same time off. You need to use time. I know you use time. Colleen has already got two plans. She's got one week off. And enjoy it. I'm gonna try.
It's a crazy time, yes.
Think of a lot of these.
And that's why you're far in the car.
Well, like you own at that other store that's selling.
Oh, the.
Add ex.
Yes, proud, you got it.
Um, so that schedule is posted, um, that, that warrant schedule, and that's actually the budget schedule. You'll see that in the Dropbox. It's probably on select website. Um, so in addition, Colleen has great news that, um, Tree City USA application for twenty twenty two has been signed off by Kathy Cook, so it'll be submitted. And we'll have nothing. Right, oh, you submitted it. Excellent. So that's a good thing. Um.
Have we had signs or something that they treat?
They do. Can we, can we think about? The D P W. Oh. What we gave. To put them somewhere. We also have a flag and a plaque and a yearly little leaf that goes on. Well.
A little leaf for every year?
Yeah. And then stickers to update the sign, the street signs, you know, two by three white green lettering that you put, you know, the years you are updated with.
I mean, I don't. To put the sign, yeah, where to put the sign, like, have we thought about?
No, we haven't yet. I think we have two. We have two signs.
So where, where would you like the two signs? So in some place, entry into South Row.
Yeah.
Definitely on eighty five, whether it's northbound or southbound.
Down on Ethan, you know, just.
Wow, can we put them where the same signs are? Let's say that, uh, league championship? There's one coming over the cosplay.
I saw that.
Yeah, and I think there's, I think there's one coming down thirty two. Right, and you're going to twenty five.
I'm sure they would give you what's happening.
Well.
Let's just get.
Yeah. Yeah, so we could prompt the D P W to follow through and maybe copy the select fortune. Um, so they're in the know.
It could like the third or fourth year, right?
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, and the plaque's great, somewhere here.
Yeah, we'll ask John Parent.
Where?
Yeah. We have it always. It doesn't always make it to the top. But they're there on our wins, so. And then. Okay, then, um, we, we are just discussing the D A L at E U C property disposition review meeting that we attended, um. Oh, my goodness, and that's it.
I'm in it.
We have to do the meeting minutes. So does the heart, uh, tour illumination include enjoying London that's one don't have to do?
That's a bargain.
Oh, so that's all trust. So we have that picture and, um, we're still working on the letter for one fifty four turn type of non compliance. We have a draft, but it just leaked a little bit and then we'll get that up. But I have a draft already that comes. Yeah, I think we just kind of resign it a little bit. And I have orders. There's a, um, on that, um, budget. Yeah, um, schedule is a is a proposed budget review by advising the select board that they're scheduling on Saturday, January first. Birthday day. Um, so here we're going to contact the people who are going to be um, invited to attend that. So I haven't heard anything back yet. Um, we wrote a pretty good description of those added budget items. Um, and the treasurer thought that you can do that when you answer all their questions already. So we'll see. I haven't heard anything.
All right, I'll hold it. Do you know if it'd be a morning meeting or?
Um, it says. Hold on. Um, the board is. I don't know yet. Um, I think they were going to let different departments know what timeframe. Okay, and it's. Somewhere it was defined, because I just don't have it right.
No worries, I'll look for it too. I just want to flog it on my calendar.
Yeah.
Try to go for a massage or something.
Can zoom in on the massage.
Face down.
Any minutes?
Yes, we have three sets of minutes, October thirteenth, seventh, October seventeenth, and November seventh.
Does anyone have issues on any of them?
I did not. Those were great minutes.
I got motion that we approve on October thirteenth, October seventeenth, and November seventh, meaning minutes is written.
Second.
I have a motion with second, discussion, favor, trial, yes.
No, yes.
And yes, the area. Next meeting. December.
Sixteen.
On AM second.
In the discussion. All in favor of the trial, yes.
No, just.
And yes, here I am.
Thank you. See you Friday.